Welcome every, I don't know if my mic works. Well, yours does. Welcome everyone to the county commission meeting of Weaver County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bolos. I'm joined by Commissioner Jim Harvey and Commissioner Gage Frower. We'd like to invite the audience to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which our invocation or moment of silence will be offered by Sean Wilkinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this morning with gratitude for the blessings that we enjoy living here in Weaver County. We're grateful for the beauty that surrounds us. We're grateful for the abundant natural resources that we have. And at this time, we pray that we may receive the rain that we need during this summer. And we are mindful of those who are in need. We pray that each of us may do our part to reach out and to make our community better and make ourselves and the people around us better through kindness and through good action that we take. We again offer our gratitude and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Item D, Commissioner's comments. Commissioners, any comments for today?
None for me, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item E, agenda-related public comments. Comments will be taken by those in the audience who would like to speak to an item on the agenda. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Any online? Okay, we'll move to item, uh, we're gonna skip item F and hold that, postpone that till next week. Our presenter isn't able to be here, so. Item G, consent items. Number one, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $78,451.44. Item two, requests for approval of warrants numbers 105188 through 105220, numbers 491197 through 491258, and numbers 446 and 447, in the amount of $3,487, sorry, $3,487,769.77. For a summary of warrants and purchase orders, Mr. Ricky Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We issued six purchase orders this week for $78,000. 60% of that amount, $47,000, is for the Fleet Department to go towards the upfitting of sheriff vehicles. 23% or $18,000 is for the transfer station, mostly to purchase colorant for wood chips as well as some asphalt. 17% or $13,000 was for the ice sheet to create, build entrance canopies. As far as checks, we issued 97 warrants this week for $3.5 million. 35% of that amount, $1.2 million, related to the conference center remodel. 30% or $1.1 million was 12th Street Phase IV construction, that's paid for with the tax, transportation tax dollars. And then 24% or $823,000 was also for the 12th Street, but it related to the waterline replacement or installation, and that's paid for with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Our top five vendors this week, Hogan and Associates Construction for $1.2 million, Staker and Parsons Companies for $1.1 million, Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District for $823,000, the State of Utah for $38,000, and the Standard, our insurance, for $36,000.
Any questions?
None.
Questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Item four, requests for approval of the minutes for the meeting held on May 27th, 2025. Item five, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Fremont High School to hire Fremont High School National Honor Society to man the Dino Encounters exhibit during the 2025 Weaver County Fair. Item six, requests for approval of amendment number 10 on the contract buy-in between Weaver County and the State of Utah Administrative Office of the Courts for the Weaver County Sheriff's Office to provide security and bailiff services at the Ogden Second District Courthouse and the Second District Juvenile Courthouse. Item seven, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Wasatch Pony Club to hold the Golden Spike Horse Trials at the Golden Spike Event Center. Item eight, request to sell surplus property adjacent to parcel number 19-064-0014 to Chromalox, Inc. Item nine, request for approval of the First Amendment to the Weaver Center Parking Lot Agreement buy-in between Weaver County and Ogden City. Any comments?
No, Madam Chair, and if you're ready?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we approve those consent items as listed on today's agenda, G1 through and including 9.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item H, action items. Number one, request for approval to ratify the 2025 tax sale results. Presenter, Mr. Andy McCray.
Morning, Commissioners. The county recently completed the 2025 property tax sale on May 22nd. Tax sales are required only to cover the taxes, penalties, and interest owed on that property. Any bid over the cost of money owed goes to the original owner or to the State of Utah Department of Unclaimed Property. Tax sale auction is a result of five months of intensive efforts by more than just the clerk auditor's office, recorder surveillor's office, treasurer's office, and the attorneys have also spent hours reviewing property ownership and descriptions, delinquent payments and balances, current laws and ordinances, and many other details that must be precise in order for us to facilitate the tax sale correctly. I would also like to express my gratitude to the Elections Team that helped us facilitate the tax sale by handling the bidder registration, as well as the Sheriff's Office for providing security for us. We're grateful to everyone that helped make this year's tax sale one of the smoothest sales we've ever had. We started this year with 80 delinquent properties at risk of tax sale, and due to Weaver County's commitment to its residents, there were only two properties that actually went up for auction this year. One was a landlocked abutting property, which was successfully auctioned to the adjacent, to an adjacent landowner. The remaining non-abutting property was successfully auctioned to the public with no properties being struck off to the county this year. State code allows a 10-day period after the sale for anyone with concerns about the sale of these properties to submit those concerns to the commission before the tax sale is ratified. The commission will then have the opportunity to address those concerns before making a final decision. As of now, we have not received any complaints regarding these two properties before their June 1st deadline. Unless you have any questions, Commissioners, we present the results of these two properties and the tax sale for your ratification.
I do have one question of clarification on the, um, it shows the parcel number, the opening bid and the closing bid. Is the opening bid the amount of taxes that are owed?
Yep, that's exactly where we start at, is everything that's owed to the county, and then everything above that goes to the prior property owner, and if we're not able to make contact with them, it then goes to the State Department of Unclaimed Property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No questions. Happy to make a motion when you're ready.
Okay, ready for a motion, please.
I would move to approve that we ratify the 2025 tax sale results as presented by Mr. McCray this morning.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and First Responders First for professional services to be provided by First Responders First to staff and MDT members of the CJC. Mr. Scott Brinkman, Brinkman, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just want to start by thanking each of you for your support with our building opening. It was a great event, and things are going very well, and thank everyone else in the county that was able to attend and give support for that. So I'm, if you remember, a couple months back, Rod Layton came in and talked about a grant that we had received from the Department of Public Safety to fund this program, and so the funding for this is all through the Department of Public Safety. And this is for mental health, for our staff, and also for our MDT members. And that MDT includes, there's about 40 to 45 people on that team. And so what I really like about this company, and I'd worked with them a little bit in the past, is they come from the first responder background. The people who run it were law enforcement, fire services, and so when you sit down as an employee, you feel very comfortable that they understand, you know, what you might, some of the feelings you might be having with whatever that trauma is you've dealt with, with that really hard case, especially with our interviewers and some of the things that they're dealing with on a daily basis. So I'm excited about that, and I'm also excited about the fact that they can handle everything that we need. We won't be able to, we won't have to go to anyone else. They can do the training, the, our employees will be doing check-ins every three to 12 months, depending on the position, and they can come out and do crisis intervention and just everything that we may need, they will be able to handle it. And so I look at this as a great opportunity for us to provide a resource for our staff and for our MDT members if they're having struggles in the type of work that they do day in and day out. And so I fully support this and hope that you will as well. Do you have any questions about it?
None for me.
Madam Chair? No, Madam Chair.
Appreciate you, appreciate you working on this. It's so important for those people who work in your office to have that resource with the kind of things that they deal with every day. So, thank you. And thanks for all you've done for the transition. I know it's been really smooth, to my knowledge, and I just appreciate you and the great work that you're gonna do for, moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion that we approve this contract between Weaver County and the First Responders as presented by Mr. Brinkman this morning.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item I. Number one, looking for a motion to leave our public meeting and enter into a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I think to, for clarity, we'll work through these one at a time. As far as the public hearing, the actions will all be taken later in the agenda. So we'll start with number two, public hearing for an ordinance and development agreement to rezone 40 acres from A1 to R115. The proposal is located at approximately 4083 West, 1400 South. The project is called Brookview Development. Mr. Felix Everino, welcome.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be before you this day to present a project that we've, we've taken through the Planning Commission, and it comes to you after a positive, a unanimous positive recommendation from the Planning Commission. So this morning, we'd like to present, this is a, an application to change the zoning out in Western Weaver. So you'll notice that on the map, I have a couple slides I'd like to share, provide a little context and a little bit of help in some, in this discussion topic. And we, we have an application in the Planning Office to change the zoning of this 40-acre parcel. So the location of this is 1400 South and, and 4083 West, and the developer's name is David Lealoli. And what the proposal entails is, is creating a residential development under the R115 zone, and the current zoning here is A1. And with, with cooperation with planning staff and the county engineering staff, as well as getting some feedback and comments from the, from the Western Weaver Planning Commission, we've come up with a pretty good plan for this, this development. The developer has, has been able to take those comments and implement those into the concept. And so I'll go on to, to show you what concept we have for this rezone proposal. So here is what's called a connectivity plan. And what this, this is required with each rezone application, that what it does is it helps us see the big picture of what type of connectivity opportunities we have in the surrounding area, surrounding this 40-acre piece. Because we want to be able to make sure that not only does it connect to existing developments that are adjacent, but we also want to make sure that the roadways throughout this development align pretty well closely with what we have in the general plan. And we feel like this does accomplish that. So here's the concept plan. You can see how you have the roadways and you have exit points to, to those adjacent properties. You have pathways along, street adjacent pathways, as well as pathways going through the, the middle of the block. The, being that this would, this 40-acre piece could be rezoned to the R115, which would allow for a total of 116 lots, no, no more. We also have, beyond some of the details that's shown on this concept plan, we've also captured some more design elements that will be part of this, this development in the, in the development agreement. Development agreement really helps to kind of spell out exactly, you know, what, how many, how many street trees are going in, you know, the, the width of each street, you know, things, things that are really more refined design elements that, that are within that development agreement. And here's an image showing the, the Western Weaver General Plan Map. This is the future land use map. The area in yellow indicates that it's area that's, it's, it's potential for medium to large lot residential, which is exactly what this development is proposing. And through a work session with the, the County Commission, there was, there was some interest in making sure we have enough detail in the development agreement. Enough detail that would really make, make it aware, make the, not only the planning staff aware, but also the developer aware, exactly what the county is expecting from the developer on this. And so if you look at these first six conditions of approval, those come from the Planning Commission. Those were, those were forwarded from the Planning Commission. And then condition seven and eight is, is what I've added after recommendations from the county commissioners from, from UU. And so you'll notice, I'll read through condition number seven, the Brookview subdivision improvement shall connect to a adjacent development, this, this thing is in my way, I can't see the whole thing, and the DeGiorgio subdivision improvements. And number eight, the developer shall submit a traffic impact study. That, that if, that request or requirement comes from the county engineer, and this, the traffic impact study will help to, to, to guide the planning staff, as well as the county engineer on how, you know, what type of improvements are necessary for the 1400 South Street. And in the report that I've provided, I'd like to just provide a little bit more detail into exactly what the 1400 South Street requirements are. And so in section 8.5.1.2, we have written in the development agreement stating that the developer shall make the necessary street improvements to 1400 South, which may include, but not limited to, the installation of additional asphalt, grading, and compacted road base as directed by the county engineer, and is determined appropriate in the sole discretion of the county engineer. The developer shall construct said street improvements on 1400 South Street, beginning at the easternmost edge of the development, continuing to the intersection of 3500 West. And then you also have this, next section is connecting to the DeGiorgio subdivision. And that's, that's the subdivision to the south of this. And the, the developer shall make the necessary street improvements to 3950 West Street and 4075 West Street, which shall consist of, at minimum, the installation of asphalt, curb gutter, and sidewalk, to the point where the improvements from the Brookview Estates meet the asphalt improvements of the DeGiorgio subdivision, and any other necessary improvements as determined by the county engineer, in the sole discretion of the county engineer. And then the connection to unsold me acres would be the developer shall make the necessary street improvements to 1575 South and 1500 South Street, as determined by the county engineer, in the sole discretion of the county engineer. And so I think that pretty well captures some of the, the comments that the County Commission had yesterday in the work session meeting, as well as these conditions that we have from the Planning Commission. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Standby, and I'm gonna go ahead with the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this? Is there anyone online? Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will move on to item three, the public hearing and possible action on an application to amend the development agreement for the previously approved Kobe branch development located at approximately 2720 North, 5100 East. The amendments are intended to help clarify the roles and responsibilities of both the developer and the governing body. Mr. Charlie Yurt.
Just trying to, to verify some last-minute facts with the applicant. Forgive me for just a moment. Yeah. We've got two items today for you guys to look at, and Madam Chair, however you want to organize this discussion part is, is just fine. If we want to do both Kobe and Eagle Crest, and then go into public hearing on both, or if you'd like to do them individually, I'm more than happy.
I'll do them individually. So go ahead with the presentation on Kobe, and then we'll open it up for public comments.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good.
Thank you.
So the Kobe branch development is a project that was approved a couple years back. It is just to the north of the intersection of Highway 158 and Highway 162 intersection, so just to the north of the, the gas station there up in, in the Eden area, on the north side of the canal. In fact, the, the southern boundary, if you can see my mouse here, the southern boundary of that project is the canal corridor. This is the layout that was approved a couple years ago, large lots and townhomes with streets and, and trails. The applicant is asking on the Kobe project to update the development agreement. The development agreement that was approved with Kobe was approved with three different developments truncated into one development agreement. Consequently, it made it look complicated, a little challenging to understand, and challenging to fully flesh out what exactly the roles and responsibilities of the applicant were versus what the roles and responsibilities of the county was. The applicant has new legal counsel, and new legal counsel has said, you know, he probably needs to make sure these are very clear before the, the community up there files for incorporation, because we want to make sure that whoever picks up the legislative authority in the future in that area understands what it was the county commissioners intended to do with this project and with the Eagle Crest project. So both the Kobe project, the Eagle Crest, are very much like the Bridges project that you guys looked at a few weeks back. Only difference between both of them and the Bridges project is the Bridges was proposed with a rezone, so it came with a zone map amendment. These ones do not change any zoning, so all zoning that is out there on the project property stays the same. As we were working with the applicant to gain some clarity in the development agreements, we did ask for a few more things from the applicant to the, the public, the primary ones of which are trail connectivity and street connectivity, so just a little bit better trail connectivity and street connectivity. The red line here is the, the trail from the existing development, the neighborhood up here is called, I believe that's Trapper's, Trapper's Ridge, is part of the Wolf Creek development. So there are some, some townhomes, there's some condominiums up in this area. So the road connects up into that project, carries all the way down to Highway 158. And the red line here is the pathway that is intended to run through the, the project. We did ask the applicant to stretch a little bit more when it comes to pathway connectivity and street connectivity. So they're essentially offering a mile and a half of pathway, which is about, if I remember right, it's about a mile more than they had originally gotten approved, so they're already offering more paved pathway in the project. We're asking for some opportunities to make some good pathway connections that are, can be potentially regional pathway connections. So power line corridor runs along here. Right now, they've got large lots that are planned to be platted here, and so we were just looking for an opportunity from them to find ways to get through without necessarily going through the backyards of those larger lots. So that's one thing. And then this development here is called Eagles Landing. It was a previously approved development. It's, there's a development agreement that still exists on the property, so that development could begin at any time, as, as long as the developer has all the things that are necessary from that development agreement. And there is some pathway connectivity intended to come through here, and I figure if this property over here, which is Elk, forget the name of it, but Elkhorn, Elkhorn Ranch, which about half of Elkhorn Ranch is now inside of the project, the Kobe project. So we know that Elkhorn has some proclivity, proclivity for selling for development purposes. We haven't heard from them for sure that, you know, there'd be any development potential or desire out of the rest of the ranch, but just in case, we wanted to make sure there's some good pathway connectivity and street connectivity. So with that in mind, we did ask the applicant to move, flex a little bit from here to here along the southern part of the property. We're looking at east-west connection on that canal. This is the canal that Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District has been proposing to pipe for a little while, so looking for a good pathway connection there to Highway 158. This would be the start of that at 158. If you recall, there's already a pathway on Highway 158 going north and south. And then we've asked for pathway connections to the north into that other project, east-west, like I mentioned here, and then finding ways to work around the power line corridor to ensure that we've got at least the easements secured, so that when the future city wants to do that paved pathway, they don't have to go through and buy easements from property owners. The other thing that you'll notice is, in this approval, original approval here, a street right-of-way was reserved to make a connection into that Elkhorn Ranch property over here. Just for context, there is a subdivision just in this area here, so having some cross neighborhood connectivity in the long run would be really important. And if you look from their plans, they are proposing that street connection now in the project. So we'll see some, some pretty great street connections. Overall, where the project is already entitled to do essentially what they want to do through that development agreement, where the applicant is asking to get, gain some clarity on how that development agreement is written, and where street connections and trail connections have been prioritized, the planning staff have recommended approval for the project. What it'll do, so there's just a development agreement amendment, it repeals and replaces past agreements, memorializes density of past agreements, provides better community connectivities, adds, if you go with the staff and the Planning Commission recommendation, adds two and a half miles of trail area, clarifies land use development standards, it makes processing and grading permitting, so this is very similar to what you saw in the Bridges project, so uses the same standards and everything. We also updated it to reflect what you guys asked for in the Bridges project, which is to not necessarily be so regulatory when it comes to sales of, of material. And it continues to allow short-term rentals, as was previously approved. So today, you've got the option, you've got three options, approval, denial, or to table. And just discussing a little bit before the meeting with the applicant's attorney, he is requesting that in today's meeting, your table, they would like formal action to be done by ordinance, and an ordinance has not been prepared for you to vote on today. We usually don't do that for development agreement amendments, we just do a contract adjustment, but they would like to see that done by ordinance, which there's really no harm in doing so. But we wanted to make sure we, it was already on your agenda, so we gave you all the information, gave you the heads up, and let you have the chance to do a public hearing on the project. Any questions for me?
No questions. No questions. Let's go to the public first. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this item I three regarding Kobe branch? Anyone online? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Baird.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Charlie, thank you, members of the commission. Bruce Baird, counsel for the project. Yes, under what's known as the equal dignity rule, I believe that it's probably safer to have this ordinance, this is a development agreement adopted by an ordinance, because it's part, it's revoking other development agreement that were adopted by an ordinance. It's, it's no big deal. There was just a miscommunication between me and Charlie last week about this. I'll take the blame for it. So we'll, we'll fix it. We'll do two simple ordinances, one for Kobe and one for Eagle Crest. And again, we thank the staff for their excellent presentation, their great work for the last several weeks. As you probably know, we just simply took all of the changes that you requested for Bridges in the basic development agreement template, and we incorporated all of those changes into these two development agreements, along with the specific terms that Charlie has talked about regarding the difference between these projects and Bridges. I don't think there's any other issues. And again, I apologize that we didn't, that I didn't catch the ordinance issue earlier, and we'll get it fixed for next week.
Thank you so much. Anyone else who would like to speak to this item?
So question?
Yeah, sure.
So I'm assuming, Mr. Baird, that you understand that we would table this today then and bring it back as ordinance next week? Is that your understanding?
Yes, sir. That is, that is my understanding. Close the public hearing and bring it back for ordinance adoption.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Why don't?
Okay.
That's covered.
Thank you. Let's move on to item four, public hearing and possible action on an application to amend the development agreement for the previously approved Eagle Crest development located at approximately 4601 East Fairways Drive. The amendments are intended to help clarify the roles and responsibilities of both the developer and the governing body. Mr. Charlie Urt, again.
I'm gonna try and play through this one a little faster than the last one, since it really is more of the same. The only differences are, we're talking about a different project on a different property, but as far as the principles go, they all remain the same. So the Eagle Crest project, this was what was previously approved. Eagle Crest straddles, mine just went blank, 4100 North, Fairways Drive, excuse me, which this portion of it has not been constructed yet. County and WACOG has put some money together. We've gone out to bid. I believe we want this road to be built by the end of this year. And the applicant for, through both the Bridges project and this project, which, by the way, Bridges is right next door here, just to get you an orientation there. The applicant has volunteered to compensate the county the difference on what his frontage would otherwise be. So rather than him building it, county's building it, and he'll be compensated by the county for doing so. So really good win-win opportunity for the, the public, for the county, and for the, the developer and the taxpayers. So this is what was previously approved. They're not asking for anything significantly different. They're asking for the exact same amount of density, no, no zone changes, nothing like that. The only thing that staff mentioned or commented on is if there's gonna be a shared parking trailhead in the project, we are asking that that trail extend down a little bit further to the south. Long term, between the trails that are going into the Bridges, the trails that are going through this project, which connect, whoops, connect into the Bridges, you can see that right up in here, the trail that's over on Highway 158, and the trails going through Kobe branch, you're gonna have a really robust trail network in that area. And if we can get a couple of trails through some of the, the fairways of the golf course, you'll have some really great connectivity opportunities for the community. So lots of community gain, I think, in doing so. The applicant wanted to make sure it was very clear. They're not asking for short-term rentals in this project. They made an agreement with the county, as well as the neighbors, that they wouldn't do short-term rentals with the original approval, and they want to make sure it's clear that that is not changing. Okay, three options again, but again, I think they're requesting that you table it pending formal ordinance next week. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
No?
Go to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this item? Mr. Baird, did you have something to say to this one as well?
Just for the record, Madam Chair, the same, same statement I made regarding Kobe, that's all. And again, the same, the same thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments, I would look for a motion to adjourn the public hearings and reconvene public meeting.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, item six is our action on public hearings. I two is a request for approval of ordinance 2025-10 and development agreement to rezon, to rezone 40 acres from A1 to R115. The proposal is located at approximately 4083 West, 1400 South. The project is called the Brookview Development.
So I'd have a couple of questions for Felix if I could.
Sure.
So we discussed this yesterday. I just wanted to confirm the language we had. Obviously, this comes down to the connections between 1400 South and then the DeGiorgio and the Anselme subdivisions. Read that paragraph to me, sort of going in the development agreement that talks about the connection to, basically, DeGiorgio is the one I'm concerned about.
If I may, Madam Chair.
That's number seven, Felix. Excuse me. That's, that, it's the condition number seven.
Yes.
On your.
So, I mean, yes, I can, I can read the condition, but I can also read the exact language in the development agreement.
I'd like to hear the exact language, yeah.
Okay.
Just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, so this is the, the DeGiorgio section here. Says developers shall make the necessary street improvements to 3950 West Street and 4075 West Street, which shall consist of at minimum the installation of asphalt, curb gutter, and sidewalk, to the point where the improvements from Brookview Estates meet the asphalt improvements of DeGiorgio subdivision, and any other necessary improvements as determined by the county engineer, in the sole discretion of the county engineer.
Okay. So I thought one of the, you talked about sidewalk, but DeGiorgio doesn't have sidewalk, so we're not requiring sidewalk in DeGiorgio. Is that correct?
Well, we would, we would require the, the sidewalk all the way down to the point where they meet DeGiorgio's asphalt.
All right.
Yeah.
So to, to the, where the asphalt would end then?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's my question. I just wanted to make sure. And then the asphalt on 1400 South, again, that's up to a traffic study. You talk about the traffic study, and you talk about the county engineer having discretion.
That's right.
Based upon that traffic study?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions, Madam Chair?
Okay, I could have a question, Craig. There's an ordinance and a development agreement. Do we need two separate motions on these?
We have it in the past.
Okay.
I think as long as it's clear in the minutes.
We'll cover it there.
Okay. That, and just caught my attention. So, okay, I'm ready for a motion on this ordinance. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'll make a, I, I move to approve that we approve ordinance 2025-10 regarding that development agreement as presented by Mr. Yaverino today.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-10. Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bollos?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item I three, looking for a motion to table.
Move to table 613 under our agenda today.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And also on I four, looking for a motion to table this one as well.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion that we table I as listed under action items number, excuse me, under public hearing item number six, I four, we table I four, that item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item five, commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Please.
Sixteen days, is all I got to say. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.